Foundation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Actually, I thought I was vice chair, but I was.
You want me?
Yeah.
Want to be chair today?
Yeah.
Good.
Make a recommendation, Dave, be chair.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we have minutes from March 6 that need to be approved. Has anybody elected those yet?
Yes, I did.
On the side Heather, we need to keep track of executive minutes that like we're done with and we might have to open up to public.
Right.
And may have sort of gotten some backlog over the past couple of years.
I have Reggie currently working on backdated minutes.
Okay.
She's doing the most recent and going back. And we'll make sure we have everything up to date for when the auditors come in the end of March.
Ed, you weren't here. I have no problem with the minutes.
I have no problem. I have the minutes.
So, I mean, because of just whatever, I'll take a motion from you from Jackie to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes for March.
And even though I'm chair, I'll have to second that, just for process. And then those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. And then we have some warrants there.
We have Bruce has an appointment. Be with us.
It's until nine o'clock.
Okay, that'd be good for him.
Nine o'clock.
Is he on it?
No, he's safe for open session.
Do him open time for the public if you want.
Okay, so we have some warrants. There's a payroll warrant. We can just do it all at once, I guess. I'll go through each one of them, except for the one that Jackie can't sign. So there's one, two, three, four that we'll go right through. Payroll warrants fourteen thirty-seven dash two for seventeen thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Well, I was gonna go do them all at once. Payroll warrant fourteen thirty-seven dash seven, one hundred forty-one thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Payroll warrant seventy-three thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. And payroll warrant PD fourteen dash thirty-seven, thirty-nine thousand six hundred forty-nine thousand forty-one cents.
Make a motion to accept those warrants.
Jackie?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then there's one payroll warrant for payroll warrant fourteen dash thirty-seven dash three for six hundred forty dollars that Jackie can't do, so I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Aye, second, those in favor? Staying?
Staying.
Approve?
Approve.
Okay, so those are the warrants. So Heather, the next thing on it, it looks like is the license and permits.
Yes.
Pizza ninety-nine is looking for a jukebox permit. Signature.
Yes.
Do they have like an entertainment license as well?
I don't have the answer to that question. I can look into it for you.
Is there?
Generally, generally, there are two separate licenses. Generally, entertainment covers television and music, live music, DJs, disc jockey, live bands, comedy shows, et cetera. Jukebox is usually an independent license that's done also by Massachusetts and obtained by either us or the city clerk's office who have issued them. It looks like in our town, we issue them. It's essentially a coin-off license.
A what?
Coin-off.
Oh, okay.
Is essentially the category of falls under.
This automatic amusement thing?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve.
So I move.
You have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
They heard that they may be looking for an entertainment license.
We can talk with them.
Yeah. For live music and whatnot. Jackie can send this one here. Next is Edwards Library, Public Library, one day wine and malt only liquor license on March fourteenth. And that isn't here. They're having a reception for, on Friday night, for a fundraiser for mini golf. And this is something that's actually Friday night, not the day of the actual golf tournament. So I take a motion to approve the one day liquor license for the library, for the fundraiser.
So move.
Jackie? Hold harmless agreements.
That's like, you know, hold harmless agreement against ourselves.
Well, they have a sign. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those said Jackie?
Aye.
You could sign that. Hampshire Council of Government aggregate amendment, are we working with that tonight? Are we gonna hold on that?
Director, would you like to give them an update on the H-Cog?
Yeah, is he coming in tonight?
No, he's not coming in tonight. Jackie and I have met with a bunch of the different municipal aggregates around. We've been in the process of gathering information and we're looking to see if you guys would be open for having all the different municipal aggregate companies come in at one time and talk during one meeting, so you guys can see what options are out there.
Can you put together a spreadsheet for which is better and what, for which is, what off, who offers what?
We can try to, but to a certain extent, it's one of those things that I think it's better explained in person, because they understand a lot more what they're talking about than we even do on the understanding end of it.
Well, I think sometimes, though, it's also nice to have a whole, the card whole, the cold hard stats of part of you. This is how much it's gonna cost the town, this is how much the town will save.
I think with how much it's gonna cost, how much it's gonna save, though, it's, the answer is, it depends on the time of year, the main supply, the rates.
But you can roll it back five years and see what the trends are, so I mean, you can get some sort of.
Well, in two thousand twelve, it was a lot cheaper, and right now, it's not. The power is, it's a lot different, so. We can see if they can give us samples.
On that, I would like to know which ones are calling themselves a broker, which ones are selling, wholesalers.
Or suppliers.
Electricity, and which ones are just a middleman.
Okay.
Okay, because that'll come helpful.
Sounds good. That's right.
Okay, so nothing on, is Hampton community, the cable access, nothing on that?
I sent an email out this morning. Where we are with that is according to Bill from Copelman and Page, they're still working on the agreement, they're looking to have, or the contract, they're looking to have a draft of their amendments to us by the end of the week, so you guys can look at it over the weekend, and hopefully it can come back before the select board on Tuesday.
Now, is there some changes on that since we met last with them?
I think when you first got the contract, you got it very bland from Channel Five itself. The attorney has many comments and many amendments he'd like to see.
Okay, it's not so much that it's the radio and the TV station.
No, TV station, I don't believe that's made any amendments to it.
I didn't want to make sure something was added.
But, so once we get that, we'll get that to everyone, so you all have a chance to look at it over the weekend and put it back on the agenda. And we have notified Kathy over at Channel Five, so she does know that there will be amendments and changes to it.
All right, very good. Chapter sixty-one A lots on Cook Road, County Road, those are pending, that's not on discussion tonight. Select board goals and objectives, I think we should probably postpone that until we have a full board. Division of Local Services Technical Assistance Services, that's a new request? What is that?
Yes, so what happened was, they sent us a letter.
Who sent you a letter?
Division of Local Services, they're a part of DOR, they sent us a letter explaining what they do. Essentially, they provide complimentary services. They have several different areas that they come in and look at for us. They can look at review, reviewing financial operations, assessing financial conditions, fiscal health, analyzing government structure, preparing cost study, determining indirect costs, evaluating information technology systems, exploring feasibility of, I'm sorry, regionalizing, consolidating services, and examining, examining specific or emerging problems. All you guys have to do is vote that we'd like them to come in, write a letter, and then they're good.
How did this happen?
I woke up one day and there was a letter on my desk from DLS.
That was it, okay.
That was it.
So they reached out to us?
They, yes, they do the outreach part of it. Like I said, DLS is part of DOR.
Okay, so free, there's no fee based?
No, it's, I can read you the comment here. The technical assistance section of the Division of Local Services provides consultant-type services related to municipal financial operations, government structure, and other matters of financial management at no cost.
All right, can you, we'll send them a letter, say, okay, and we'll put them on the agenda, but can you give us a list of what you just said? Could you drop that in an email to us so I can?
I did. Actually, the email I sent this morning included a link to the website that had the list of all seven items.
All right, so we'll send a letter for them to come in. Four point three, consideration of next special town meeting. Is it, what's the need for special town meeting that you?
I spoke with Mike this morning, this was on the agenda, I'd spent on the agenda for several weeks. He said unless there's a need from Concom or any other department or committee, commission, anything like that at this point in time, then that there is currently.
We have an annual town meeting coming up.
We do.
You know.
Did you wanna make the annual too big, if you can get some stuff?
No, but what I'm saying is, if it's this, if it's, something can wait, it should wait, because there's a cost factor to it. We're not touching into free cash from our discussions in the past, I've been, until we realize where we are with the budget. So with that being said, there's a question I have is, have you discussed with any departments about capital items?
I have not had the opportunity in my seven days being here to share on capital items.
But I know you've been talking to department heads, I don't know if it's come up. I did see a memo a couple of weeks ago, looking, people were curious on how they're gonna handle the capital items, and is there a capital items review process? And last year, we did not have a capital committee established, and it fell on the Board of Selectmen, and we were criticized for not having it by, I think, DOR and the auditors. And we need to not let that happen again, so either we're gonna do it, or we're gonna get a committee to do it, but it should be on our radar. And a big part of that is, I do think that we should have the finance committees input on what they're thinking are on capital items at this point. Do we, are we considering a town meeting, or are we gonna hold off till we get free cash?
Okay, I'll talk to, I'll talk to finance committees, see what they say, I'll look into what we did last year and where we're at now, and see where we can go.
You did have a capital improvement committee, right?
We.
Yes, we did.
It's defunct.
It's defunct, but is there any money in capital improvement?
No, no, it was in the reserve funds.
Okay. All right, moving on to something more happy, I hope. Vote for Chief Procurement Officer for Heather.
Yes, in the last audit that was done from FY two thousand and twelve, the auditors actually recommended that we have a chief procurement officer, so that there's one main person where any large procurement areas or deals that need to happen go through that one individual.
I think we did this with.
I did this, I was a procurement officer for Highway Department, I did take all the exams and stuff like that, but you know there's some schooling involved with that with DOR.
There is, there is. The next class that's actually even remotely available is until, I think, around the summertime. I have online classes that I can take, it's the, you know, spreadsheet or slideshow, what have you, but there's other training that's hands-on that doesn't come up till June, because there's.
I strongly recommend that, we recommend that Heather become the chief procurement officer. Diane Schinman, when she was here, was chief.
She was.
It only makes sense.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
And again, Town and Ministry of Goals and Objectives, I think we should wait till we have a full board. Tell you what, Heather, over the weekend, while we're reading your email, how about you sit around and think about what you think your goals and objectives could be and submit them? How's that? Is that good?
How about we meet each other halfway?
Well, we also got a job description that explains a lot of those goals and objectives.
Okay. Town and Minister of Report?
Okay, yes. Let me one second, let me just find my sheets. All right, so we had our first department head meeting last Thursday, went well, everyone I invited had attended, which was great. We are going to be having a monthly meetings for the department heads, the first Thursday of each month at ten AM. We're also gonna have some varying subcommittee meetings, so we will have our monthly public safety meeting, which will include fire, police, health, building inspector, et cetera, on the same Thursday that we have our monthly meetings, but it'll be after that meeting. We're working on having monthly finance meetings, we're trying to finagle a way to get a member of the finance committee to actually meet with tax and accounting and assessors and me at the same time, just trying to figure out if we can do it during the day.
Can you just, yeah, I can't say.
Nighttime would be much harder, because you're trying to get me to be in three places, finance committee here and that meeting, so. Let's see, and anyone else who's not involved in that, which is, I believe, just mostly the town clerk, her and I will go to lunch together once a month, stay in touch. IT outreach, at the monthly meeting, there was a lot of concern from the department heads that we have no IT support in this building or in the town in a lot of ways. Police Department, they're pretty much good, but there's a lot of concern right now with the website, with the email, with other things, with upgrading the server, that we just don't have any IT that we can really reach out to. So we had talked about, you know, submitting any ideas or any people or any departments or even any businesses people knew of that were IT-related that they had in mind that might be a good resource to reach out to. So we're gonna start talking to some of the IT people out there, I talked to Mike about, and just see what they have out there for ideas, information, if they have any suggestions on, you know, what we're doing, what we could be doing. Start talking to them, start looking at, you know, what would it reasonably cost us? What would we have to budget to be able to do this, be able to include them in our round?
Are you planning on getting this together for the budget for this year? Because it's gonna be a long year without that kind of service. From my experience over the last eighteen months, we had a lot of problems.
We're gonna see what we can pull together, we're gonna try to start meeting by next week with them. I think so far, only three or four people have recommended folks to meet with.
No, I don't know if Hampshire Cog, at one point, they were offering with sheriff service.
They do have IT services, they're on the list.
They're on the list, but, you know, there was a couple of communities that used them and didn't continue using them. I think Granby was one, and Belletown was another.
Okay, well whoever, whoever we even meet with, we'd all ask for references and check with them as well. And I'm also gonna call around some of the local communities and see what they currently do.
I mean, ideally, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd like to see somebody in here three or four hours a week, just doing proactive stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I prefer to see.
So who does Silvana use, or the police department?
He has a gentleman that does his website, who is, just does it for no cost.
Okay.
And the guy's not interested in doing anyone else's.
Well, I mean, the whole dispatch is all computerized, who does all that?
I don't know, I'll find out about that.
It's all, I mean, he just operated, probably about four or five years, he operated the whole system.
Don't know about that one, but we will find out. Phone tree, we, we now have an updated phone tree system in the event of an emergency or should we have to cancel. Along with a copy of the phone tree system, all of the employees also have a copy of the PPPB's policy on the event in case the town hall closes, or working from home policy that says essentially, if town hall closes, you don't get paid unless you use your vacation or personnel time. So they all are aware of the personnel policy.
We've actually gone through that policy twelve different times.
Oh, well, that's the most recent that I know of in two thousand and one.
Comes up every winter, what is the policy? Thanks for being proactive with that.
Yeah, so they have that in the event of an emergency, we're all good to go. Senior Center, we, everyone is in agreeance after I met with, let's see, Adam from Health Inspector, let's see, Tom from Plumbing, the Chair of the COA, Jennifer and myself, that they're going to put a hand sanitizer station in over the hand wash sink. So.
That's gonna suffice?
It's only, yes, and it complies with all of the regs, so it's gonna cost them approximately fifty dollars instead of a thousand plus.
So I was gonna put one of those on.
Yep, hand sanitizer right outside the bathroom. And they are good to roll. The only other concern they have right now, or the only thing they have to deal with is, they are going before the Board of Health on the twenty-fifth, I will be there to support Jennifer as long as I can, to just go over the issue of the grease trap. They believe that as long as they use disposable.
They can't, they can't, they have to be very careful what they do in their kitchen.
They're not gonna cook anything.
Well, the septic, septic system is barely there, is barely there.
So what they have agreed to with Adam is they're using everything disposable.
Mm-hmm.
They're using disposable plates, disposable silverware, everything. If they do heat anything up, they're gonna wipe it out with paper, paper napkins, paper what have you.
Throw them away.
But most of the food's actually gonna come from North Hampton, because they have a federal grant for the food to be transported in. So they won't be cooking.
They want it fried later at one point.
Yeah. Jennifer has put together a proposal of all the menu options of what they're gonna have, where the food's gonna come, and she'll be presenting it for BOH.
Just to let you know, the reason we're so concerned is that what they do will affect the septic system for the whole building.
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely.
We just gotta be very careful with it.
Absolutely. So that's, that's where we are right now, so we shouldn't have to worry about that too much. I mean, Adam's in support, I think Jennifer's on the right page, and we'll just have to check and be in touch, and everyone will have to stay in communication with it. Couple of the quick things, I've started meeting with individual departments just to see what was happening in them, observing, meeting with the department heads, see how things are going. I met with the accounting department this week so far. The two things that they have the most concerns with is making sure they get the materials so they can pay bills on times, bills on time and payroll on time. Those are paid every other week, and bills have to be in no later than ten AM by Thursday to the accounting department. Sometimes what folks will do is they'll leave it downstairs in the mailbox after ten AM, or, you know, they'll be running late with it, but if that's the case, they just need communication, just know what's happening, that, you know, they have something coming in late.
Can Joyce go down and check the mailbox at ten AM on Thursday?
I think we're gonna try to make sure that they go down at that time, but the problem is if someone leaves it in like ten oh five or something, you know, at that point, they're, they're on the haywire, they're typing it in, they're, you know, going to town. They're not gonna, I don't think it's right to expect them to go down every five minutes thereafter and see if anything's there.
Every, every five to ten minutes.
Exactly. Same thing with payroll, same deal, those are due no later than nine AM.
So what is your, what is your take on people who are salaried that don't put in timesheets? What is your take on that?
Well, a lot of the contracts, you guys haven't written specifically in. Like my contract says, I'm required to submit my timesheet. Other people on salary, so unless you guys come up with a personnel policy that requires everyone to put, everyone who's salaried to put in a timesheet, I don't see how you can require that.
We had, we had, we had problems with.
You still have problems, it's.
We had a problem with somebody who said they had all this vacation time when they finally retired, but had been taking vacation time, but wasn't really tracked because they weren't putting in a timesheet. So that was difficult. We have to track how many times they take time off, because that goes against their vacation time. And then at the end of, when they left, he tried to take X number of weeks of vacation, we knew he took more than that in a year or so. So that's one of my concerns, we have to kind of look at, how we track the vacation time, that's most important.
Well, we can just require, you know, I'm of the opinion, you know, whatever you apply to Peter, you apply to Sally. So if you apply the rule to A, you apply the rule to B.
Okay.
I think on numerous occasions, the board have taken a vote that all personnel has put their time in, so it can be tracked on vacation, holiday, personal time, sick time.
So that's all personnel.
It's been numerous times we've done this.
Okay, if, maybe we can chat later, Ed, and if you know more specifically when that is, we can find the minutes.
Yep.
Other thing.
Two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand.
Do you know like month?
I'm sorry, it's, it's an ongoing, it keeps coming up. It's one of those things that has to be, that has to be.
Solidified.
Thank you.
Server, it arrived earlier today. I was on the phone most of the day today, most of the day yesterday, talking to a bunch of the bids that had come in with different companies to see which one, you know, we want to work with as far as installing the equipment. Everyone was very nice when I talked to them, I asked Zillions a question, and they were all very patient. The one we decided to go with was actually the one that ended up being Dell preferred, I guess, that's what they're called. They were the ones Dell had recommended, they had contacted us once we bought the Dell server. They're Dell certified, they deal with the Dell servers all the time. We talked about the specifications of the Dell server, you know, what it's gonna take to transfer the data from the server it's currently on to the new server, how long it's gonna take, you know, all the details, the specs, stuff like that, try to do it the best way possible, try to interrupt as few people as we can when we do the transfer and the like. It's gonna cost us, I wanna say it's a little bit under, hold on, can I see if I get the exact amount, right here. We had several bids, some of them were in the range of eight thousand, and some of them were much lower.
Installing and updating, right?
Yes, let me see, three thousand five forty.
Really?
Yes, and that's, that's as long as he doesn't run into any glitches.
Does that, does that include the hardware?
No, the hardware was only two thousand something, it costs more to install it, and a lot of people I talked to said, they even thought that was a decent amount, because some of the people I talked to said that they wouldn't charge anything under ten grand to install, which is like, we don't have that kind of money.
Are we gonna have any problems with the unique software the assessors have, which is, is patented, and the same thing with the assessors and the treasurer's office, which is a special program?
The soft ride should be fine. The point is gonna be more of an issue only because it's not compatible with the newer years, and they had identified that even on the lone server when they did it. I don't even know if it's backed up right now on the server, lone server, I think it's just on the computer itself that it sits on.
So we're gonna have a problem with point?
I think we already have a problem with point.
Okay, the new server's not gonna address it?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, because that should be addressed, because that's.
I think we're gonna need to look into it, but I don't think, you know, paying more money to have it installed is gonna help us. I think we just need to figure out what our possibilities are for backing up the board.
Well, if you're saying that the point system we have is outdated.
I don't, first of all, I, I can't propose to say anything, because I don't know anything about the point system. If we're talking about the clerk's office, I can tell you about their programs.
Just keep us, keep us informed in that, because it's something that is a big part of serving the public.
No, we'll do. So that's where we are with the server. Tomorrow, I'm actually going on a tour of the schools with our superintendent, and I'm meeting with Randall and the superintendent in the morning, so that Randall and the superintendent can finally meet, so that highway and schools communicate.
So going back to the server, when we talk about backing up, do we have off-site backup?
We do not have off-site backup. A lot of places I've talked, I've talked to and I know don't have off-site backup, that's something we need to have eventually, and we should have.
Is iCloud secure enough for municipalities?
I've talked to other IT people that I've known for years, and they still don't use iCloud for a backup yet. They're hoping to eventually trust it enough to do so, but they don't yet.
That's what Hampshire, I mean, Hampshire Cog is dealing with, the cloud.
Mm. And then last thing is annual town report. I sent an email out to all of the departments, commissions, committees, et cetera, et cetera, letting them know that we need the materials as soon as they can get them to us, and that we can work together, whatever we need to do, but we need to work on getting our annual town report done by the end of the month to submit. That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's it, that's it.
That's all she wrote.
That's all, that's all I wrote.
All right, I think that's about it, except for open time. Jackie, do you have any concerns?
Yep, I have a few things that I wanna announce. Liz and I are going to be meeting with Richard Leclerc about the Memorial Day Parade, and on Thursday at two thirty, and then on Friday, Sergeant Illingsworth and I are presenting Sergeant Illingsworth and I are presenting the Citizens Crisis Assistance Program to the seniors, seniors at twelve o'clock. And then on Saturday, the Angel Heart Parents are meeting at Paisanos to discuss the upcoming dedication for the monument, which will be on May fourth. It's a Sunday at twelve PM, which I'm gonna send on press release to people so they know it's coming.
May fourth?
Yes, it's a Sunday at twelve PM. And then also we're having a bake sale on April nineteenth at Tractor Supply uh, to help, um, you know, parents pay for the dedication day and some of the pavers. And I will announce those things. I'll put them in a press release and it'll be on the website and let people know.
Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Ed, do you have anything else?
No, no sir.
Um, there is a, I just wanna announce that there is a fundraiser for the Friends of Library where they're gonna have mini golf inside the library. No drivers are welcome. Putters only, please. So come play mini golf at the library Saturday, March fifteenth, ten AM to four PM. It's five dollars per ticket. And I guess you can buy tickets at the door and again, it's a fundraiser for the library from the Friends of Library. All right. Anything else Heather? All right, open time for the public. Mr. Coombs, did you have? How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a map.
People wanna share or... My name is Bruce Coombs. For those of you who don't know, I've lived in town for approximately forty-five years. And I'm gonna sit. I started a business called Heritage Surveys on, which is now located, or was located in the building which is now the subway back in nineteen seventy-six. And around nineteen eighty-five, I moved that business to the corner of Clark Street on Route ten at two forty-one College Highway. And then subsequent to that, I purchased the town library when the town decided to put it up for sale and build a new library. Um, and the book business that had been started in the building in nineteen eighty-five was gradually moved over to the library building, which is at two twenty-five College Highway. Subsequent to that, or more recently, uh, the opportunity came up for me to purchase the, the house just subtly of two forty-one College Highway, which was the Sablowski Farmhouse. And I purchased that. Uh, and I've been dealing with some environmental issues that existed behind the gas station, which have been resolved to a point. As a matter of fact, I'll be coming up next Monday with an update from GBS on, on those issues. Um, I've been in contact with Ed Colley over the years and David Google, Board Selectman, and others regarding various items and was so much surprised last week, in the middle of the week, I received three certified letters from the Department of Transportation regarding their proposal and apparent plans that existed to put a sidewalk running from the firehouse uh, down the, generally on the westerly side of College Highway to the intersection of Clark Street, excuse me, where the survey office is located. And then at some point coming across and running from the intersection of Clark Street, approximately three hundred and fifty to four hundred feet to the gas station. Uh, I, in the, in the letters, certified letters I received indicated that the Conservation Commission was meeting on, uh, last night. So I went to that meeting and the person from the state who was supposed to be there didn't show up. But the Conservation Commission did open the meeting and I was able to talk and to address my concern about the extension of the highway from Clark Street down to the gas station. The...
Extension of sidewalk.
Extension of the sidewalk, I'm sorry. The, uh, the sidewalk does no purpose, does serve no purpose or no benefit to myself from Clark Street down to the gas station. It would only add three hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk that would now would be required to shovel after uh, every storm or after the plows go by to, uh, to fill it up or ice it up again. And it would, there are no sidewalks emanating from the Heritage Survey or Heritage Books Building at two forty-one Clark Street or from the farmhouse next door. The access is from the driveways to the, uh, and, and in terms of the Heritage Survey and books business, uh, almost all of the clients access the office from the parking lot. Uh, so I, I'm not in favor of the section running from Clark Street down to the gas station and in fact, I think it would be detrimental to have kids from the park walking down to the gas station to get a can of soda and, and walking into the, an area where cars constantly come in and out to, uh, to get gas or to, uh, or for whatever other activity would go on in the building that, next door to the gas station that was recently vacated by the bicycle shop. I think a, a much more efficient use of the sidewalk would be to run it up, for example, from the apartment buildings, uh, just south of Cumberland Farms and in front of the, uh, the shopping center there up to, up to Gun Road and, and take into account a property that I happen to own up there, which is at one eighteen College Highway. And that sidewalk would, would benefit because it would allow people from the apartment buildings to walk down to Cumberland Farms or to the Paisanos, shopping area or down to the, from the other apartments. And it would be, uh, it would be much, much, uh, more benefit to the town to, to have that section built rather than from deadening, dead ending from Clark Street down to a, uh, a gas station that has had some environmental problems. Um, I didn't mention this to the Conservation Commission last night and actually the Conservation Commission's function is generally relative to wetland issues, but they did open the hearing and they did listen to what I had to say and it was, uh, it was a very, excuse me, a very cordial meeting. There was a young lady who, I'm not sure who she was or where she lived, but she expressed her opinion and I tend to agree with it, that the sidewalk should be constructed on the east side of College Highway from East Street to Clark Street, not, not on the west side. There is a semblance of sidewalk on the west side and there's, uh, some, uh, some sidewalk in front of the library building, which I constantly shovel and plow and attempt to keep, uh, accessible for people that might walk by or come into that bookstore. And that bookstore is open to the public on Saturdays and Sundays. So that, uh, the sidewalk is not in the best of shape. It could, it could use some enhancement to, uh, protect it somewhat from the snowplows, snow that gets thrown up on it every time, every time they go by. But my, uh, my other concern is, uh, the, when I purchased the library building, the furnace that's in the basement is, was kind of on its last legs and now it has reached the point where it is, uh, it, it, I don't know, if it makes it through this season, I'll be happy, but I'm not sure about next season. And over the past two or three years, I've been in touch with the members of the Hoyo Gas Company and attempting to get them to put a gas line, a gas line in front of the, uh, building, Heritage Survey's building at two twenty-five College Highway. And I've had discussions with several people there and as a matter of fact, Tom Sears, Jackie Sears' husband, uh, came out and met with me, looked at the furnace in the basement to get some sizing as to what the capacity of the furnace was. And, uh, we had some discussions, but it seems like the, the Hoyo Gas Company has not seen fit to construct that sec, that, to construct the gas line in that area of town or, uh, they've claimed that they didn't have funding and they also wanted me to solicit the people who lived on uh, College Highway and attempt to get them to either send letters or file forms with the gas company. And I really don't feel that that's my responsibility. So part of my reason for being here tonight is to ask the Board Selectman and Newtown Administrator, and I fortunately had a chance to meet her today, if the town would take on the responsibility of, of sending a letter to the gas company indicating that, that this could be a high priority, particularly since there will be construction of a sidewalk on one side of Route ten or the other. It's an opportune time for the town, for the gas company to put in the gas line while the construction is taking place or prior to concluding.
So Bruce, when you, when you talk about the sidewalks, for clarification, is it on the parrot side or is it on the library side?
The plans show it being constructed on the west side, on the parrot side.
So it's on the parrot side. So it would run all the way down to John Mark's Land? Um, thinking there would be a crosswalk there?
I'm not sure exactly where the cross...
When I looked at the plans last, last, you know, month or so before I left, they were updating all sidewalks on the west sided street in front of the church all the way down. And then they cut across some point, uh, to, uh, in front of the cemetery, not cemetery, uh, in front of Conant Park and that brown building there. And they extend it all the way up to that intersection and then go up on the east sided street up to the bike store. That's how I saw it.
So it's gonna be like a Z?
It's gonna be on both sides.
But is there gonna be a crossing light or a crossing line?
I would assume there has to be a crossing line.
Because the crossing light is up back here.
Not a light. You'll have a, a crossing, um, bars.
And this is what the, uh, the young lady pointed out at the meeting, that there already is a crossing light here, which is at a good location for school students to cross. We were coming down from the, uh, our school, and get on that side of the road, which is the same side of the road that the park is on, rather than having another crossing light, which is gonna be down somewhere near the historical building, from what I understand.
No, not gonna put a light.
They're not putting a light in Bruce. That's what my concern is that the tractors are gonna come over the hill down to the Sidco.
Exactly.
And they're gonna be going and all of a sudden it gets to be crossing the street right there and then...
Right.
All right, so, so...
And they do travel at a hybrid speed coming down.
Now, where does a gas line end? Where, where's, gas lines to this building, right?
Gas line is right here.
I, I've, uh...
The car is shot.
You know, I type...
Okay. And then the other thing is, this, this, obviously they must have looked at a section of, of roadway to stay through the town of Southampton. I hope they looked at Palmeroy and College Highway and go on, go in more.
If they remember, I updated you people. There's another private sidewalk program going on called Safe Roads, yeah, Safe Loops and Road program. And that's going in front of the housing for the elderly down Gun Road and, uh, yeah.
So that will connect Palmeroy?
Correct.
The sidewalk is on Palmeroy, will that give you...
It'll be on Route ten.
Be on Route ten and...
And it'll go down to Gun Road.
Gun Road. Is, is there a talk about putting a crosswalk there? Because the kids run across the subway at the school.
It's still in the, in the design phase.
Cause then...
It's still in the design phase. There's supposed to be a hearing on that.
Okay, so because Jackie's, you know, Jackie's park is down Ellen Drive, so it's, it's not unconceivable to think that you would wanna crosswalk where the kids would go across to go to a park. Yes, it's a small park, but it would be allowed to get across that area. So I don't know...
You're not gonna set a light?
I don't know. I just don't have time to go in a light. But it's something they could have.
Case in point, East Hampton wanted for years to get lights up where Georgia's Pizza Shop is across, because there was a few fatalities there. And they didn't do that until way after the issue, uh, developed.
So sidewalk would probably go down past the gas station where the gas line is at the parrot, then cross over somewhere in front of... The old sidewalk crosses over to the library, right? Isn't that where it crosses over?
No, there's nothing.
There, there's no crossover. There's nobody sort of on the west side and all sorts of things.
There is a crosswalk at the bottom of Maple Street going over to Mass's Building. And it goes down to the library where Bruce's house is.
Business. Uh, I put together this plan to show all of the people who would benefit from getting, uh, gas service and I'm sure that just about everyone affected would appreciate, uh, having gas rather than having to pay for oil and worry about the oil truck coming and everything else that is associated with it. With it, the gas, to me, is much cleaner. I do have gas service to the building at the corner of Clark Street at two forty-one College Highway. And I was able to get the gas company to run it across the lawn from Clark Street to, to forty, uh, three College Highway.
Where's it come from? Comes up from Clark?
Which is from East Street. So, so they're going, they're going across the lawn. So if, and I'm, and I, again, I don't, uh, I'm not in favor of extending the sidewalk from Clark Street subtly to the gas station, but if that happens, that gas line should be relocated in the sidewalk area within the public roadway, not across my property. They are also seeking a construction easement from me to do the construction on the, on that section of sidewalk.
A temporary or permanent?
Temporary. Um, so this I prepared to, for the purpose, it didn't have anything to do with the sidewalk because I didn't know that about that until the middle of last week. That's the first I had heard of it. Being in a butter with three properties, you would think that they, they would have at least not had it made, whether they would hold hearings or the planning board would hold hearings or the selectman or somebody, but I, I got a letter last Wednesday that there's a hearing on Monday with the Conservation Commission. I get there and nobody showed up from the state. Uh, they were very cordial in opening the hearing and talking about it. They're gonna continue it till the thirty-first. But I think this requires, or would, would should require, or I would suggest that the selectman, uh, address the two issues. One, that there has been no public discussion or input uh, on the sidewalks and, and two, uh, the possibility of having the gas company uh, or encouraging the gas company to install gas lines wherever the sidewalk might go.
Because, just, just, just for clarification, it's a state, it's a state road?
There's thirty, forty people probably that will be benefited by it.
From the gas, right. And I would, I would appreciate gas, I'm supposed to go there. Uh, but it's a state road, so, you know, our control of the state road is limited. Um, and Ed can, and talk about this to break the...
Just one comment on that. Unfortunately, even though it's a state road as opposed to East Street, this, it still requires me to go out and shovel that block, uh, even though the state is coming in and doing this without benefit of the town, you know?
We, I'm just, I'm just...
And I can get fined for not shoveling.
Right. I'm just saying, I'm just setting the stage with the fact is that we don't have control over what the common one will do for the, for College Highway because it's a state road. Running through our town. So we have limited control as a select board. But having said that, what we'll do is we'll ask Heather to, to see if she can get in contact with the state and make sure that the process has been done well and done appropriately. So if it has not done, then, then we have some terms to actually make sure it gets done correctly. If the state was not there for the opening, for the hearing, then that was not done correctly because the state has to be there.
That's, there, there's another hearing. There's a hearing for conservation, which is required to get permits, but there's also another hearing for all the butters, which I don't believe they've had yet, to go over the plans.
The state has to put that one together. They're the ones who are in charge of getting all the, all the easements?
But, you know, they might have had a hearing already. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, this covers seven different towns. Am I right? It's not just for Southampton. This, there's, there's several towns involved. I believe there's Hadley, Amherst, Belcher Town, um, part of Northampton, Southampton. I don't think there's any East Hampton, but I believe it's several towns involved.
Ed, do you want...
They might have had the hearing already at one of these towns for all the towns.
Do you wanna get involved with this at all, Ed, with your expertise to help guide Heather?
My comments on the sidewalk going up, uh, Route ten, I, I'm gonna disagree with Bruce on that. I've seen hundreds of kids over my years walking on Route ten, whether it was snow or not. It's just a matter of time that somebody's gonna get hit by not having a sidewalk. Granted, you don't, you know, they're gonna go to a variety store to get drinks and candy and come back to the park. And here's an opportunity to improve the safety of people walking to and from the park because the only option for them to get any beverages is that, is at that store. And to have the kids continually walking in the road when we have an opportunity to put a sidewalk, I have to say I disagree with.
I think I might have an answer to your question. Notice of a public hearing. A designed public hearing will be held at, by Mass DOT to discuss the proposed Amherst, Hadley, Northampton, Southampton, West Brookfield sidewalk and wheelchair ramp construction on Routes five, nine, and ten project. Components of the project located in Amherst, Hadley, Northampton, and Southampton will be discussed at this designed public hearing. This has already been held. This was held Wednesday, October twenty-third, two thousand thirteen at seven PM.
October?
In Northampton, yes.
At Northampton?
Mm-hmm. That was their design hearing.
No, no notice. And they own four properties.
I don't know what, you know, I've seen these before. A lot of times I don't believe they actually send these out to the actual butters when they do these design hearings. I think they just post them. So chances are, if you check with Eileen, she might have posted it somewhere. Cause usually what happens when... Because usually what happens when there's a community involved, they'll, they'll mail or email these to us and we are required to post them.
My dealings with the state, they are required to tell, talk to the butters and send them notice, especially if there's gonna be a taking or a temporary taking near their property.
So I'll call them, we'll find out.
Thank you.
I'll follow up.
Can you get back to Bruce a little more?
I will get back to Bruce. We'll exchange contact information at the end of this meeting.
Thank you very much Heather, very exchanging contact information.
Now, in regards to the gas line, I've talked to Bruce numerous times over the last, maybe three or four years in regards to this. And I've also talked to Tim Shannon, the head of the gas division. And their comment is that they don't have it in the budget, they're gonna put it in the next year and next year, you know. It behooves the board to send a note to, or a letter to them saying that here's an opportunity to do this in cooperation with a road project out there, which, if I'm not mistaken, the Mass Highway will also get ahold of the utility companies that ask for an update when there's utilities in the area, if they plan any expansion, because they don't want to build something and only have it ripped up. So I would recommend that we send one letter, Hoyo Gas and Electric, saying this project is on the books, it's gonna be done and here's an opportunity for you to canvass the area and find out who wants your gas and do that extension at a reduced cost because the restoration work, the state's gonna do, okay? And get in conjunction with the state saying, you want to make sure on this project that Hoyo Gas Electric is notified and you meet with Hoyo Gas Electric about taking care of a spur between Clark's, Center Street and Clark Street on College Highway.
You got that Heather?
I think I do.
Okay, because there's both gas, and it leaves basically, you got gas at both ends of that intersection, those intersections, and you got roughly thirty, thirty-five people that would benefit a short run.
Bruce, Mr. Coombs?
I just want to add a couple of things. There are, there are two town properties that would be served by the gas, the Historical Society and the Old School, even though it isn't occupied all the time. So that, so there would be some benefit to the town from that standpoint. In addition, I had someone recently look at the furnace in the library building and apparently through consultation with different people, the, whoever put the furnace in there, after it was put in, they built a wall in the basement. So there's a concrete block wall running that separated part of the basement. So in order to remove the furnace, which is, has, clearly has a hole in it, out of the building, put in another oil furnace would require tearing down that wall or cutting up the furnace and be, you could get a new furnace into it. So-
Can you put a propane tank though with the backyard there?
A propane tank?
Yeah.
Uh, that might be possible. It's, you know, it complies with all the regulations as far as being above ground or underground and having the capacity and so on. But propane is not as efficient or as economical as gases.
Any other questions, Mr. Coombs?
Thanks for listening to me.
Anyone else over the top of the table? Any other issues, Bruce?
I don't see any.
Is this gonna be less than an hour meeting then?
I got seven twenty-five on my clock.
We can wait a few minutes.
That's okay.
You sure?
Positive.
Alright, make a motion to adjourn.
You can't.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Off every hour.
Thank you.
Thank you Heather.
In time. Before you guys, are we off?
Yep.
We're off, yeah.
Okay.
Done?
Yeah, we're done.